Lunskey.
Here.
Maticek.
Here.
Reiker.
Here.
Sandy. Schumacher.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Quorum present, reading an approval of the minutes from the May 4th, 2022 meeting. Mr. Butke.
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Butke, second by Ms. Lunskey. Any further discussion? All is in favor of approving the minutes as submitted. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same side. It's approved. Item three, public hearings.
Three dash one, public hearing, Platte, De Soto, Third Resubdivision, located at thirty-five-ten South Eighteenth Street.
Mr. Brooks.
Uh, thank you. I'll... Share this out here, just so they can see it online as well.
Did Ms. Sandy, she didn't answer, or did she call in?
She said she was going to try to connect by phone.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Brooks.
Okay, so hopefully everybody can see that on the screen in front of them as well. This is the De Soto property, which is, I don't know if that's me or not. To the north of this is Thirty-second, here's... Thirty-sixth. This is the old Peabody, um, uh, Lumber Mart, um, area. These are the De Soto apartment. Built, uh, probably five years ago or so. And one of these properties, the properties are being sold. As part of that sale, there's a simple lots split being done to make sure that this entire driveway is on the property. And then there's a small piece of right away as part of that as well. Pretty simple repl from our perspective, and we're recommending approval.
Any questions for the public hearing? Not seeing any. Open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to cock up the microphone, address item three-one, please do so at this time. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to commission, Mr. Reiker.
Move approval.
Moved by Ms. Reiker, second by Ms. Lunskey. Any further discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Three-one passes. Three-two.
Item three dash two, public hearing, Platte, Grand Valley, First Edition, located at Sixty-second Avenue South and South Twentieth Street.
Mr. Brooks.
Thank you all again. Share out the screen here. Just give me a second to hop back and forth here. So we had lots of discussion on this last time. And, uh, one of the items that was requested by the commission, uh, one of the, one of the sticky points was Sixty-ninth. Getting that straightened out. Uh, the developer has done that. So as you can see over here on the, uh, the right side of the screen, which is actually to the south.
Sixty-ninth, that was straight up over there.
Uh, in it, so they've straightened that out and, uh, the other things that have come into place, they stretch out these lots a little bit. I think is just part of that. It, uh, divided across all that. There was small adjustments made in the lot sizes. The park dedication committee did meet and has approved that. And then that recommendation goes on to the, uh, Park District, uh, as well. They meet June seventh. And, uh, we'd expect their approval as well. Uh, developer has worked very closely with them on their request for the park.
About a block and a half from Sixty-second. Lived there, uh, just under a year. Uh, I'd like to thank all of you for your service on this committee. I know it's not easy, and I do appreciate people when they serve. I don't have anything against this property and this development, but I just have a couple of questions. I don't know how this all works here in Grand Forks. I lived in, uh, West Fargo for seven years. I used to live in East Grand Forks for...
Yeah, so I think to, well, I'll ask the commission, but to your, to your question, so we've worked really closely with the, the Park District. Quite, quite a bit, way more than probably maybe has ever been done, according to them. And so if you look at, uh, the PUD or Platte, um, the whole area, the park dedication will be over ten acres. And then the pond is a little over eleven, eleven and a half acres area. So the idea we have actually is that, um, we would like to do, so the pond is gonna be, you know, long, this is, this is a half mile, uh, long. It's a big area. So we'll do a park, uh, uh, what we want to do, obviously, we're likely to park this area, it's up for discussion and minutes and everything too. But our current plan, our current thought is actually to do a bike path that will, to circle around the whole park. Uh, and then naturally in, in the neighborhood, it'll be fully sidewalks and all that as well. Uh, but in actual park area, it's gonna be, there's a pretty big plans for the park. I don't wanna speak too much to an early, because you don't want to promise anything. But what I would say is that there's a lot of talk about, uh, doing, uh, about the path that circles not only the park, but whole pond. And, and sinking it down a little bit, so it's not necessarily in anybody's, you know, backyard, but be a nice, use the pond as an amenity. Uh, and with that, then, there's sort of talk, and now I'm speaking outside of my limits, this would be a park district thing. But there's been talk of the park district to, to do a skating loop in the winter time, next, right next to the bike path. So not only in summer, but also in winter, you've got activities that you can do, walking, precious skating around, uh, which, I mean, let's also get on there. Probably a good line along between, you know, towards the south and loop around. So we're really looking forward to that. Um, but again, we have some, some pretty good ideas, whether it be trying to do some sort of facility, whether it be a warm house and, uh, different, trying to do something different maybe. So whether it be along that path, doing, uh, you know, even just ideas, your giant chessboard, you know? So as you're walking, you kind of step aside and, and play a little, you know, chess with checkers with, you know, who you're walking with. Or whether it be, uh, you know, bags or just, just different ideas. We're trying to think outside the box. So it's not as your typical, hey, we're bringing in twenty lots, uh, you have a dedicated, dedicated park. Park is built fifteen years later. Uh, we're trying to work out ideas to try it all, or a lot of it done on the front end. So we'll, we'll bring in the area, we'll also bring in a nice big park, um, as soon as we can. And we've been working quite a bit with, with the park district as well, trying to make that, uh, make that a reality.
Thanks, Mr. Curry. Mr. Reiker.
So how would one act, so there'll be, the pond and the park are one in the six, so there will be like a loop around the pond as well? How, how would one access that from?
Yep, so, so...
Right, but the general public, I mean, will there be like something off of Sixty-ninth or Sixty-second or Fourteenth, some way to get in there?
Yep, so, uh, and again, all this is subject to change. The current thought is that, uh, the, the south end here of Sixty-second is where potential facility of a building and a parking lot.
Okay, okay.
So that would be your option then.
Yep.
We also have a flip, because Sixty-ninth will be, uh, oh, the ten acre roadways will be minor, so that could be on street parking there too. Staying away from Sixty-second, uh, so Sixty-ninth will probably be the main corridor, people coming out of Washington to access the park and pond and amenities.
Good. And thank you for straightening that road out. I really appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, engineer.
I, I have another question too.
Yep.
So, um, for the gentleman who does live on the north side and would need to perhaps cross Sixty-second Avenue to get to that park, would you put up some pedestrian lighting, something like that, to get from, I'll call it the King's Walk, King's View addition?
Once they urbanize that whole road, they're gonna have to...
Yeah, cuz it's...
Yeah, at some point, there's gonna be crosswalk facilities. Twentieth Street's likely, that's the, where this edge is. Uh, we haven't figured out what the, what the plan will be, so I don't wanna promise anything quite yet. But that Twentieth Street's also the same road where your entrance, you know, if you go to the, the north side of this area, that's where, uh, I think was a light or whatever just went up by south. So that's kind of that midway point between Washington and Columbia, so it's kind of that natural area. But there may be other pedestrian facilities. I don't wanna say that be the only likely source, but...
Good evening, my quorum in the CPS, just in hurry to get on with all this. One thing we should add too, one of the, the tech changes we got on the preliminary plot was to have access to the pond. And so what we did is, uh, we added this Fourteenth Street, which means it would belong on the north side of Sixty-second. And so then with that, we can do pedestrian facilities that would tie into the, this is the pond and lot.
And this is the...
Our lot.
Okay, that makes sense.
So there is a connection for the properties to the north to enjoy the, enjoy the park through here too, without having to go all the way down to Sixty-second to access it.
Yeah, we're on Twenty, we get down to Sixty-second where we talked about having a parking lot and stuff. But you can be able to access it right off of Sixty-second. And also internally, we did add some walkways through here. And so this is, this is, the plot doesn't look all that big of an area, but it is, it's quite large, from Sixty-second to Sixty-ninth is a half mile. So that's why we added some, some side yard, um, sidewalks through there as well. And then also, um, there's plans for a shared use path along Sixty-ninth Avenue that would tie into Washington. Uh, Sixty-ninth is a collector, and so typically you'd have a, a shared use path along there.
I use, I bike and walk by Ryan Lake all the time, so something like that would be awesome.
I think it's good use of a pond.
Absolutely.
Mr. Maticek, I saw you...
Yeah, from Riggs Road to Hudson Drive, I can't read it cuz the numbers are so small. How, how wide is that? Is that a, can you?
Uh, I'm sorry, where was it at? Riggs, Riggs Road to Hudson?
Yeah, right, right here, this road here. Did, I just wanna know how wide it is.
Oh, they go left to one forty each. That's far enough.
What's it?
So two eighty.
Two eighty? Here, this one.
There it is.
Are you talking about the cut through, Frank? The twenty-foot cut through?
Yeah, the right of way there.
That's twenty foot?
Twenty foot. That's, thank you.
I zoomed in, you can maybe see it on the screen a little bit better.
Yeah, his screen. Okay, all right. Barely said about twenty feet. That's fine, thank you.
Yeah, that's similar to what...
I'll audit at the end finally.
Okay. That's similar to what we did over by Discovery as that area as well. And that's just to protect that, that's where the, the cut, the storm drain cuts through. And that's to protect people from, um, kind of invading across those spaces, so they become right of way in some of those cases.
Mr. Reiker.
Yep, the R-three that's on Sixty-second there, that's on the north side of this R-one. What, uh, could that be an apartment building? Uh, what, what kind of density are we talking about there?
I'll jump to the, the PUD.
It said medium density, uh, R-three, but just for my, what does that mean to me?
Yeah, so we have the details on that on the PUD, but let me, uh, I'll zoom in. I think we left it at two... Over the right side, didn't I? Yeah, two-story.
Sixteen.
Yeah, and it's a max of two stories, which, so I, I don't know if they're gonna be able to get to the sixteen units an acre.
Right.
Just due to that height.
So it'd basically be townhouses?
Yeah.
Okay.
Potentially, they could do an up and down. I don't know if they have a plan of what that's gonna be yet. But we limited them to two-story high. We didn't wanna get much higher due to the proximity to what's to the north there.
Okay. Um, all right, I just, and are we, are we putting a sign out there or something, so we don't have people coming in saying, why are they building that there?
Uh, we can talk to them about subdivision sign, uh, which we have for requirements, yeah.
Yeah.
And I would, I would anticipate something like that going in the corner.
And I like, I like the fact that we have R-three there instead of R-four. I think that makes sense.
That's better.
Okay. Um, any other, I guess before I move on, we'll close the public hearing unless, uh... Okay, Mr. Butke.
Just one other question, piggybacking off of the, the comments earlier about the, the bikes. I'm curious specifically about how it connects to the broader network of bike paths and multi-use trails, um, when I think about the...
It's on an early conceptual on that, I think.
Sure, sure. You mentioned the, a multi-use path down Sixty-ninth. Does that eventually connect to Washington?
That'll connect to Washington, yes.
To the Greenway? Does it connect?
Yeah, so it's probably a little bit easier to, here's Sixty-ninth, that'll connect up to Washington. Sixty-second, you know, so, uh, kind of follows our, our grid system that we have. So Sixty-ninth is part of that, uh, functional class system that kind of connects in between. That'll eventually go all the way over to Columbia to Washington here, so that's part of that linkage. And then this is more of a, I would say that's more of a, not necessarily, uh, once you get into the park and that area, that's gonna be a little bit different feel. That's exercising leisurely strolls. But, uh, as you head down Sixty-ninth, that's, that can be multiple things, right? It can be getting to the store, uh, heading to the commercial pieces. On occasion, the, uh, somebody heading over to a friend's place, some of the kids, those types of things. So that, that's gonna be a little bit water, um, broader scope of where you would go on Sixty-ninth, Sixty-second, those types of things. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Yeah, yeah.
Awesome. Okay, um...
Nope, please.
Ryan, so the R-four does not, we don't, is it just typical R-four zoning then for that R-four section?
Yes.
Cuz that's not in the data summary.
Yeah, so if I zoom into that, yeah, we didn't, that, that's still in the, we still will have probably this be in the phase, and then this is probably your third phase.
Great. But will they, will it require a zoning change if they wanna put in a typical R-four then, or?
No, this would be putting R-four into the zoning.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, oh, I'm sorry, we do have that as conceptual right now, so let me...
So it's, yeah, so what is that? Does that mean something different, or?
I think what we did...
Cuz we have the R-three in there, but we don't have the R-four, and we don't have the R-two either.
Yeah, we do have that just as conceptual, so I, I think, uh, in this case, we would need to do an amendment similar to what we did with, over by Discovery. So as those phases came in, we'd do the zoning change. This is them showing what their intent is going to be, uh, for future. So with the concept, that's kind of what we've done, is that this is what our plan for the future.
So are we zoning it our, I mean, if somebody wanted to...
It's still gonna be, uh, egg zoning officially.
Oh, official. So if it says conceptual, that means we're not approving any zoning for that?
Correct. And then the next phase would be, when, when that comes in, gets plotted, then the zoning will change for those.
Okay, okay.
All right, um, with that, I'll close the public hearing. Um, bring it back to commission. Questions, comments, motions, Mr. Reiker?
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Reiker, second by Ms. Rel. Many further discussion? Not seeing any hands. Call for vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same side.
Aye.
Motion three-two passes. Three-three.
Item three dash three, public hearing, Grand Valley, PUD Concept Development Plan, located at South Washington Street and Sixty-second Avenue South.
Mr. Brooks.
Okay, so as, I think we covered this a little bit last time, but here, here's where that phase is, where the plot's being done. This is what we'll call kind of that first phase, and this is where the zoning's actually getting into place. Uh, the future ones are gonna be conceptual, but this is going to show the whole concept from Sixty-second down to Mayorfield Road here on this side, Washington to Twentieth. Um, the, uh, we have the lower density, uh, R-ones up on the north side. And for now, they've got kind of the little bit higher density, uh, to the south of that. And commercial, um, along the Washington and Mayorfield areas there. I'll stand for any questions that you may have, and this is public hearing, and we've mailed out notices as well. Eight hundred feet around.
I guess I'll open the public hearing up, see if anybody in the audience would like to speak on three-three.
Why not?
I figured we answered good questions for you last time. Please go ahead.
I'm still Steve Claus, and I still live at sixty-thirty-seven Magnolia Drive. Uh, I, I... I bike a lot, uh, thousands of miles a year. And, uh, and when I was in East Grand Forks, they have great paths in the Grand Forks and all that. Over here in the south end, I go down Sixty-second towards Columbia, cuz I think I'm gonna go down to Walmart. And so I head down there, and I get to the end, and I go on the street, and I hit, and then I hit King's Walk. Now I'm on Columbia on the road. People going fifty-five. There's no, there's no shoulder on that road. There's no sidewalk getting past King's Walk. And this is the first time I'm over there, and I'm thinking, I'm taking my life in, you know? This is crazy. You can't get, I can't get down Columbia because King's Walk, there's no way, no road, no nothing. So now I'm looking for other ways. So then I head down through the residential, and I go back over by Lumber Mart, and I get all over, you know, and all that stuff. But then I'm over biking in, over by Belmont, and Sixty-second, I'm gonna come home. And so then I come across on the, on the path. Well, you go about two blocks, you run out again. You can't get, you can't get from where I live over to Belmont unless you go down to like Fifty-fifth and cross. Uh, it just doesn't tie in on the south end. And so anyway, with all this new development, somehow, you see you tie this in, you tie that other bike path in from Sixty-ninth to, to South Washington. That does you no good, because there's no bike path in Sixty-second to Magnolia Drive, going that way. There is going towards Columbia, but you can't, I can't go up to South Washington. There's no bike path. There's nothing there, other than Sixty-second the road, and I'm not going on it.
Can you get to the path by Ryan Lake and take the bike path?
Yes, I, yeah, I can do, kind of do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cuz then you wouldn't have to go all the way to Columbia Road.
Right. But I like to go all kinds, I like to go all over the place. You don't always want to go the same path. So anyway, all I'm suggesting is if you tie this stuff in, you know, they say they're gonna tie it into South Co... But then you, you get there, and then you run out. There's no way to get to, from South Washington when they...
That's kinda why, that's kinda why they need all these PUDs and all these stuff going forward?
Yes.
Is to tie all that back.
They need to tie it all in, and that's all I'm suggesting and asking for. And I know it can't happen here tonight, but if, you know, as you go through life, and as I bike in Grand Forks and love it here, uh, just appreciate it if you'd look, make sure all this stuff ties in. It ties in really well on the north end. It doesn't tie in so well on the south end, in my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Nope, thank you. Thanks for your comments. Okay, with that, I'll, uh, anybody else, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the commission. Ms. Durlinski.
I'll move approval.
Moved by Ms. Durlinski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Reiker, I heard. Um, any further discussion? Mr. Butke?
So I believe in the staff packet, there was a, a note about, um, the amount of commercial, right? And perhaps I warranted some, some discussion, uh, around the perimeter, but I don't think we've actually talked about it this week or, or, or last time.
Right. So right now, it's conceptual, um, and we've kind of left that alone until we'll get to that next phase. But it's certain, there is a little bit of concern. We wanna make sure that as we get into this next phase, cuz we've talked to them about annexation's gonna be, you know, once, once they start getting into the, the phase that's to the east of the park, then that area's gonna get annexed. And we do wanna have a conversation with them as, as part of that, that, um, we don't wanna have these commercial islands sitting out there and not getting annexed, developed, and, and sitting out there. So there is a bit of a concern that is there, is there a need for this much commercial out there? And we will be dealing with that when that comes into play. I'm hoping that this gets reduced. So right now, it's, they're showing it as conceptual. It's still gonna be egg. But there is a, there is a concern that that's a lot of commercial that's gonna be coming in. And I, right now, we do have strips along Washington to the north of this that are gonna be more attractive for, uh, anybody coming in to, to develop. So I am concerned about the amount of commercial and whether that stays that much. Uh, this is probably, uh, you know, could be a five years before we have that answer, before the next phase comes in. But, uh, that, that's gonna be something that I kind of wanna at least let them know that that is our concern.
Mr. Maticek.
Yeah, thank you. Just a point of interest. I noticed on all of our packets that the May sixteenth council action, there's nothing there. I assume that everything passed. Unless it didn't, it would be put in there. Is there a reason why it's not on any of these?
Yeah, none of the, we didn't get, uh, any of those motions and seconds. It just was a matter of timing, so I apologize for that. Uh, council did pass all of our items.
Mr. Reiker.
So would, to me, it would make sense that that all be commercial. What, what would the highest and best use in your mind be for all of that?
I, I think it's possible that you're gonna have to look at some density, that there may be some townhomes that are gonna need to happen on some of those areas. As we even go to the north, uh, if I, if I can go back to this, even along this stretch, we end up with a lot of residential. Right now, they're showing this is all commercial all the way down. And we don't have all commercial from Forty-seventh to Sixty-second. There's residential in there as well, so. And we still have some holes, not holes, but there, well, yeah, there's still some holes along Washington, south of Thirty-second.
So you'd want what, R-four in there?
Well, I think, uh, you know, it's potential that we're gonna see R-three, R-four, um, uh, in that area.
Are you gonna get much interest for townhouses on Washington?
Uh, we've got single family along Washington in the King's Walk area, so it's not unprecedented in this proximity. They had to go to very large lots, but...
Sure, all right, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, um, with that, I guess we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same side. Three, three passes. Three-four.
May I, who actually opposed? I didn't catch that, but, okay. Okay, item three dash four, public hearing ordinance to amend Chapter Eight Land Development Code, amending section eighteen dash zero-three-zero-one-three relating to off-premise signs relating to spacing.
Mr. Brooks.
So this is, this was discussed last time. It's the text amendment to the billboards. We actually did write that up for, uh, the ordinance, essentially looking at the five-hundred foot as measured radially from billboard edge to billboard edge. So it's straight line distance, meaning you're not gonna be just on one side, so it'll go, uh, across, across the way as well. So with that, that was what was discussed last time. This is a final text amendment.
Okay, and a public hearing, so any questions before we open up the public hearing? I'll open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience like to step up, address item three-four, do so at this time.
Gotta be real short. Uh, Josh Gillen, twenty-one oh one, Thirteenth Avenue North. Mostly you know that I've, I've been trying to get this five-hundred foot rule changed a little bit. Couple of the, uh, permit locations that we put in, uh, will be affected by the five-hundred foot rule. But with that said, um, I think there's other battles to, to pick. But I would just say, as far as the wording of the ordinance, I may suggest adding any radial direction so that it's understood clearly, cuz even looking at the way it's written, you still have a perception that maybe it's, it's linear to the, to the road, it's linear to the direction of the, of the board. At least if you're gonna redo it, I'd make sure it's done right, so there's no misinterpretation. At least if you're going to redo it, I'd make sure it's done right, so there's no misinterpretation, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to step up and address? Three-four, I'm not seeing any, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to commission. Mr. Riker?
I'll move approval, adding the word radial, 500 feet, radial in any, yeah. 500 feet radial of radial direction of another.
Just like we have.
I don't know if I like that either. Within 500 feet measured.
The distance shall be measured radially in a straight line from billboard edge to billboard edge?
Yep.
Yeah, I like that.
You good with that, second, Mr. Maticek? Okay, any further discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Three-four passes with that wording added, thank you. Three-five.
Item three dash five, public hearing, fast track replat of Lot E, block one of the replats of Lots B and C of the replat of Lot Two, block one, Current's Third Resubdivision located at 4680 South Washington Street.
Ms. Edwardson?
Good evening. Feels like it's been a while since I've been up here, but we're at 47th Avenue and South Washington Street, this last lot on the northwest corner. We've seen a couple times, they've shifted the lot lines once or twice, now we're requesting it to be in the middle of the, the lot. So, simple replat, simple lot split, could answer any questions you might have.
Okay, again, public hearing, I'll open up, anybody in the, anybody up here want to ask Andrea any questions before I open the public hearing? Not seeing any open the public hearing, anybody wants to step up and address three-five, please do so at this time? Not seeing any, close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Mr. Riker? Mr. Lunskey, second. Any further discussions? Any, I'll call for vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Three-five passes unanimously, three-six.
Item three dash six, public hearing, conditional use permit for Titan Machinery for heavy machinery sales and service in a B3 general business district located at 1601 North Washington Street.
Ms. Edwardson?
All right, so we're up Titan Machinery, right across from Home Economy on North Washington Street. In your packet, you'll see the conditional use permit request for it. They are looking to do a sizable addition to the lot, and with that addition then comes some site improvements. Sorry, the scale of this is a little bit off. So looking to do a building addition on site, and with that comes some improvements to pavement and corridor landscaping and things like that, that we can incrementally get as these things happen along the corridor. So you'll notice the CUP had those kind of requests included in it, in terms of, like I said, paving along the corridor, getting some curb and gutter in, getting some additional landscaping in that makes sense with what they'd like to do. They intend to have some display areas, if I can get my words right, out front here, which is why the landscaping is kind of clustered together in order to have that display area be appropriate as possible with their equipment. We've tied it to the, or looked at the Ironhide example that we did a few years ago as much as possible, given it's a similar use, different business, did the same things there with Ironhide, improvements along the corridor, gravel and storage yard in the back. I will say the difference between the two sites is Ironhide was a brand-new greenfield site, they weren't, you know, they were going in and adding that gravel brand-new. Titan Machinery has operated at this site for quite a while with existing gravel on site. So it's a little bit different in that regard, in that they've had this gravel and been operating with it for, for some time. So getting those incremental improvements to improve the corridor where we can is what we're shooting for from a staff perspective. And Titan's here to answer any questions, as well as Rice Companies, their architect on the project. Any of us could be answering any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Edwardson before I open the public hearing?
So what do we do from an enforcement standpoint when we require gravel? Because I was both, I was looking for a tractor this spring, and I was in both this lot and the Ironhide lot, and they were all mud.
Spring is a rough time for-
But that's the whole idea with gravel, right, is we're not supposed to have that problem. If it's gravel and not dirt, then we shouldn't have that problem.
So you'll remember a few years, you know, a couple of years ago now, we changed industrial sites to be able to allow gravel on storage lay-down yards. These uses border between the use of heavy machinery sales, it's a fine line between an industrial use and a B3 retailer, and so that's where we've tried to find this happy ground. Spring is just a hard time, I don't know, and I'm not an engineer, to be able to speak at how you can mitigate that. I don't, I don't know the specifics on that as much, but trying to get the corridor improvement seems to be-
No, I agree, I agree with that 100%, I just, we say gravel, and then what is explained to us and what's called out isn't what ends up happening.
It's an enforcement issue to go out and kind of patrol the gravel that's existing out there that may be non-conforming. I will say staff does not go looking for those, when we get a building addition, we try to address it at that time, unless it becomes a problem for neighbors or something else. We, we don't go looking for these to go out and enforce if there's existing gravel out there that maybe isn't technically permitted by code. And so when this came in, it was a, what's the compromise? It doesn't seem realistic to pave the entire lot, given that it's operated this way for however long. So it was finding that balance, and they've agreed to pave the rest of their required parking and do some of these other things. We found that to be a happy medium, but would absolutely, of course, it's up to the commission to agree with that or not, so looking for feedback there.
Well, and with a conditional use permit, we could come back, is there a sunset on this, I can't remember?
With the Ironhide property, we tied it to the use of machinery sales, and so I believe this conditional use permit is tied the same way. So should it ever change from heavy machinery to, you know, a used car lot, we'd then expect the used car lot to pave.
Right. Mr. Brooks?
I was just going to mention, the one other reason that we looked at not paving all of these sites too, the heavy equipment would eventually become gravel, even if we had them go out there and put paving in. So I know some, not everybody was here either when we had the Ironhide discussion, so that's kind of what I wanted to mention as to why we got to where we were with some of these sites.
So when we, so when we call for 12 inches of subgrade fabric and then 12 inches of crushed, they don't get a permit unless that's done, right? Somebody goes out, I mean, initially, somebody goes out and checks that that's what's actually done, right?
I don't do the actual inspection, so I can't completely justify yet, but we would default back to that spec that's called out in the plan of that, and say, if there was ever a problem, we'd say, hey, your plan says it needs to be this. I can't speak to exactly what the inspectors do on site or when they evaluate it, but yes, it should be built to that specification.
Could, what if we put a time limit in here to make sure that, then we could, if it wasn't done, then we could say we're not going to reissue the conditional use permit, right?
Certainly up to the commission to do that, I think staff would prefer to keep it equitable among the same uses, but that would be up to the commission to decide.
Equitable among the same uses, but I think there is a problem with the Ironhide site, so we don't want to just keep repeating the same problem over and over again.
Is your question if they don't build it the way they said that they were going to build it?
Right.
I think we already have that, so if it doesn't get built the way they say that they're going to build it, then they didn't build it to the conditional use permit, and we have ability to go back and look at that. So if, if there is a problem with the Ironhide site, then we can go back and take a look at whether there was an issue there. I think that's, that's built in, whether it's a conditional or like we did with Ironhide, I think it was a PUD. Then either way, we could go back there and have that conversation.
And I should say then with Ironhide, if that has eroded away and it's no longer a 12 over 12 or whatever, we can ask them to, you know, backfill it or do whatever back up to that spec.
Okay. I got Mr. Budkey here, go ahead.
Yeah, so there, other properties along North Washington, there's been this, this like pattern of like an existing building then being zoned, so I'm just sort of curious what the timeline of the zoning is here, right? We're talking about a B3 and a conditional use permit. Did, did this building and this use, this business, did that precede the zoning?
The zoning up here goes way back, so I don't know exactly. B3, I, I don't know how we got to that point.
I'm not too sure when, like, inner B3 machinery sales and services specifically listed as a conditional use. Ironically, the only other one I was aware that had received one was Bobcat at their previous location. I don't think, we, we did look, we couldn't find one for Titan, probably was allowed, you know, at that time, it probably was an allowable use, so I'm fairly confident that they, at the time when they built, they were probably an allowable use. That's my guess.
I assume, if you read the conditional use permit for B3s, it specifically limits these heavy machineries to along North Washington or Gateway Corridors, a little bit why Ironhide was a bit of anomaly along south. So I read that to assume they under, you know, this was out there and they were trying to, I couldn't tell you the logic, but potentially.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Maticek?
Yeah, just want to point out, when, when John Dare moved, which is true north now, moved to Gateway Drive, we gave them a conditional use permit to go out there because it was a storage building before they did that. The original Bobcat building, which is now Ironhide, that was a conditional use request, and we did that. The new one is basically conditional use. For these equipment companies and these guys like this, this is a perfect way to go. They have machinery on, heavy machinery on areas that do not require concrete, I mean, they just don't, they're not going to have a mud hole because it doesn't do them any good, so I think this is a good way to go, and I'll just leave it at that, everybody else has had a conditional use permit that way, and it's, we've never had a recall, have we?
Or a conditional?
Yeah, on, on the machinery, the heavy use, no, it's always been okay. I know we've done other conditional use permits, we have a problem, but, yeah.
Okay?
I would further agree with Frank, I mean, they've been out there. You drive on North Washington from time to time, and it's a presentable site, never seen weeds get out of control, or if there is rutted, it seems like they're worked down and put back into place in a reasonable amount of time, so I would agree with Frank.
Okay, anybody else? Raise your hand, all right. With that, I think I'll open the public hearing, anybody in the audience like to step up and address item three-six, do so at this time? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission, Mr. Riker.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Riker?
Second.
It was right there, I looked, saw the hand, and heard the voice. Second by Ms. Orell, she hasn't done very well. Any further discussions, not seeing any hands, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side.
And I just want to thank Rice Companies and Titan, who have been very agreeable to work through this process with, so, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Three-seven.
Item dash three-seven, final approval- Item three dash seven, final approval of transfer of land to government entity, City of Grand Forks as it relates to 18 dash 09033 of city code located at 209 North 13th Street.
Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, so in this case, the City of Grand Forks is in the process of purchasing a piece, this small 10 by 25 foot square, it's actually a parking stall currently, right next to the hub. And it'll be the location for, I think it's electrical transformers that are going to be there. We're going to be in the process of redoing that alley that's right across the street here for the, part of the Franklin and Fourth Project, and hoping to improve the alley, kind of have it be a showcase for future redevelopment areas. And as part of that bearing electrical, it gets to be a lot of work, a lot of time of engineering has gone into this, XL Energy, and amongst others, in terms of coordinating this, and then down to this 10 by 25 being the location for the electrical transformer. As part of what we have in code, when we set aside pieces like this, you don't have to go through the plat process, although I will say that this is essentially a plat, this was done by a land surveyor, and he put this together. But one of the conditions of that in code is to run it still through the Planning Commission, City Council, just like we would a plat. So with that, we're recommending approval, and that it does meet city code.
Okay, there's no public hearing, so it's up to us. Mr. Riker?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Coon. Further discussion, Mr. Budkey?
So I'll admit, I was, I was a little confused when I saw this, I, when we talked about public utility, I assumed it was like a transformer for the alley redevelopment, which I think is great, by the way. But I'm, I'm puzzled as to why the city would own this, right? Like, if there needs to be some sort of like transfer of ownership of like part of a lot, why, why would the city own it? And not, why wouldn't it remain private?
Well, I think ultimately, we're probably going to have a, potentially have an easement across it for XL, who will have their equipment on it, but it's part of the coordination. When we do these, those alley projects are going to be split costs of city, XL, Energy, and then even some of the privates are going to have some skin in the game too, all along those alley. Anytime you try to get into paving, redoing the alley, bearing electrical, that's kind of what we found, is that it's kind of almost a three-way, folks getting involved in on it, so.
Sure, yeah, well, yeah, I'm quite aware of that, I guess my, part of my confusion comes from, I can think of other instances where transformers have been on, on sites, and, I mean, it would be, it'd be great if the city would purchase part of that piece of land and, and help out the project. So I'm, I'm just, I remain puzzled as to why that's happening in this, in this case, and not in some other similar cases.
Mr. Grasser, can you enlighten us?
I may confuse it more than enlighten, but I'll give it a shot.
I'm willing to take that risk, that's why I called on you, I saw your hand up.
It's, it's, it's a, we've been working on this thing for quite a number of months, and you're, you're dealing with a public public facility, basically, XL.
Yep.
And I think if I can grind it down, what, what happens is, is there may be circumstances where people have a private transformer because it's serving just a single private site. This is going to have a couple of different transformers on it, of which power will go out to other individual sites.
Sure.
That kind of makes it a public domain, for lack of a better term. And so if the city owns the site and/or puts an easement on it, then all the rules and regulations that go along with it fall underneath the, the city's franchise agreement. And so, you know, from the legal and the, and the code enforced, code standpoints, all I can tell you is it just works. We went through uncounted almost iterations, trying to figure out different ways of serving the sites. And XL, because they're regulated by the Public Service Commission, they must have a set of rules that is like that high, I don't know. We'd look at something, and then, and then they'd go back and analyze it and try to figure out if it met all the rules. It's like, nope, this one didn't get met, and so this is the end result of a whole bunch of rules, of which I can't even quote for you. But this is apparently the one that works with XL relative to the franchise agreement and the rules they have to follow under the Public Service Commission.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, not seeing any other hands, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Three-seven passes, item four, communications, nothing. Reports from planning department, Ryan?
Nothing. I lied, we are in the process of still trying to hire up a couple planners, so Andrea and I have been fairly busy, so if you've been trying to get ahold of us or know somebody, we're busy, we're, we're trying to get back to everybody, but we are two, we are down two folks, and we're open to get that corrected here. here shortly and, and not burn her out before then. So, just to let you know. And maybe I already have.
We know who's doing the work.
Yeah.
All right. No other business? With Andrew adjourned? Second. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.